Guys, there you have it.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Good.
I told everybody I didn't buy them. Actually, actually, we did all agree that we're not going to get together and actually have just family time on Christmas. We decided last year, we did that last December, well, we didn't do it last year, I had COVID so bad, but, but, uh, we decided last year that we wanted to do gifts and all that stuff and more.
Test, test. Test, test. Test. I don't seem to be getting any noise off this, so I'm gonna use this battery charger while it's... I thought I was charging it last night. I did not.
You were not.
I was talking, but the other end wasn't.
I always want to go out there to get a truck so I don't wipe everything down.
Yeah.
No kidding?
Yeah. Yeah.
Spray it with Lysol.
Is it the stomach thingy?
Ah, it didn't ask me. He said everybody said.
Yeah. It's bad. Did you hear me?
Am I giving the awards? What part of this am I doing? Okay. That's what I thought. That's what Andrea first said.
Yeah, I'll be your assistant again.
I think we're ready. Thomas Padristo, would you lead us in the prayer, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
More thank you to the state for being with us, watch over us, please, uh, deal with commissioners as they make decisions for the county, and guide them in your, in your will, and just please do with all of us during the season if you're so inclined, and just help us remember the reason for the season. Amen.
Uh huh. Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We're in a regularly scheduled Eastland County Commissioners Court meeting, December the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. We are on the record, and for the record, we have precinct one, two, and three commissioners here, and county judge. We do have a quorum. Also at the table this morning are county auditor and county clerk. First up, item on the agenda is to read and sign the minutes. I have minutes from November the eighth, November the twenty-second, and December the sixth.
Yes, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, have you had time to read the minutes? Do you see anything that needs to be commented on or changed?
Yeah.
All right. With that, then can we have a motion to, uh, accept the minutes as presented?
Motion.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that takes us to item number two. And for item two through seven, we need Judy Langford to come up. We have Judy Langford here with Langford Community Management Services. She's gonna talk to us about several operations here within this CDBG MIT, and of course, Steve Gertis is here, and the Eastern County Water Supply District will be the beneficiary once it goes through the county to do some great projects they've got out there. So, if you'll take us through this and tell us what we need to do.
Absolutely, and I didn't print out the agenda, so I could just... Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. So, if y'all remember, it's been a while. A year and a half ago, the county applied for a GLO, General Land Office mitigation application for the twenty fifteen disasters, and the county was funded. Those were up to a ten million dollars, and the county was funded for just underneath ten million dollars with a one percent match. So, the, what's here in front of you for court is all of the startup documentation that is required by the General Land Office, and so we'll go through that, and then there's a kickoff meeting at three o'clock this afternoon here at the courthouse with GLO to kick the project off, so.
Steve, will you be able to be back for the kickoff meeting?
I plan alright.
Good.
Alrighty, so you'll bear with me. The first one is to adopt a resolution regarding the civil rights policies for the GLO Community Development Block Grant Program. And this is that, with all things housing and urban development, which is the, the monies come from housing and urban development, from HUD, is that they require that you have policies regarding different civil rights processes, and the county has passed those before when you did Texas Department of Agriculture grants. These just say the same thing for the General Land Office, so you'll just need to pass the resolution, um, adopting those.
Okay, and you have it ready for us?
I do.
You sent me the items earlier.
I have a lot of items. This one will come too. Apologize, I should have had them out. They're in the order GLO wants, and not in the order on the agenda, so I apologize for that. Okay. There's a lot of paper. All right, this is the resolution, whereas the County of Eastland, Texas, here, and referred to as County of Eastland, has been awarded CPG funding through a CPG grant from the Texas General Land Office. Judge, do you want me to read the whole thing, or do you want me to just?
Uh, no, just the, the end of it where it says therefore.
Therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of the County of Eastland, Texas, that the County of Eastland adopts, reaffirms the following: a citizens' participation plan and grievance procedures, a Section Three policy, excessive force policy, and as you, as you employ more than fifteen employees, a Section five oh four policy and grievance procedure, and fair housing policy.
Okay.
And those are all as part of the package as well.
Okay. Let's...
Do you want to do them each individually, and then come back to that one?
Yeah, we'll come back to, uh, you have two through seven, so what you're talking about now is just the part about adopting the resolution regarding the civil rights policies?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, so the civil rights policies are the excessive force policy,
Okay.
which is the policy that prohibits the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies when there's jurisdiction against any individual engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. That basically is that policy. Do you want to do them individually, or just all together?
Yeah, just, go ahead individually. Just give us the overview, the overview of each one.
Okay.
I don't want you to have to read all of the...
Appreciate that.
You'd be here a while.
Yes.
We'd be here a while.
You'd be here for a while. Section five oh four, policy against discrimination based on handicap and grievance procedures, is accordance with twenty-four CFR, section eight, non-discrimination based on handicap and federally assisted programs and activities of the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three is amended, and section one oh nine of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four adopts the policies and grievance procedures of, that, that the county will not, um, the county will not discriminate against anyone that has a handicap, and that it sets forth a grievance procedure, so if someone did regarding this grant have a grievance, that there was a, there's a procedure in place to handle it. So, that's that one. Then there is the Section Three policy. Basically, Section Three is where HUD has said that they want to encourage everyone to hire low to moderate income persons when it's viable to do so, and that's basically all Section Three is, is that you say that you're going to, where it makes sense, you will encourage that, and you'll encourage that in the construction bids. It doesn't set forth any specifics on how much or percentages, it just says that you will encourage it. Fair housing policy is that you will, um, you agree to affirmingly further fair housing choice for all seven protected classes, and you will do one activity during the contract term to affirmably further fair housing. And then that's, that, then, that's all that's connected to that resolution.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments on this first section, which is number two, is the resolution, uh, adopting civil rights policies for the GLO grant? All right. Any public input? All right, hearing none. Uh, can we have a motion then to adopt that resolution, and to all of us to sign off on it, or if I'm required only to sign off on it to agree to that?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Okay, let Kathy get caught up. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, if you want to go ahead and...
There's three sets there, Judge.
Okay. Is it set up in here for just me, or there's some parts that there's resolution for all of us to sign?
It's just you on this, on these.
This one doesn't have any green flags on it. It's the, it says resolution number blank regarding civil rights. I guess that's a copy of this one?
It's just the front page of it.
Okay. I'm gonna hand these back to you. We will need a copy of this for the clerk to go into clerk's file.
It's actually three originals, if you want to do three originals.
Can I grab the top one?
Yes, ma'am. He signed off, set three seven. And those are both in this section.
I don't think he signed those.
Oh, he didn't sign those. Okay, we'll come back to that. I'll see you again today.
Okay. All right.
We'll leave you up here, and then we'll get them afterwards.
Okay. Item number three is to discuss, consider, and take action to approve the resolution designating authorized signatories for contractual and financial documents pertaining to the twenty twenty GLO Community Development Block Grant mitigation. And just for the record, we now have a contract number. It's contract number two-two dash zero eight-two dash zero zero one dash D one nine six. Ms. Langford?
Yes, sir. This is, the agency requires that the county set up folks to sign contracts and vouchers and other documents. That is what this is, and right now, we have you, Judge, Loretta as the county auditor, and then usually we have at least two more just in case, and we, and we have that blank at this point, so y'all, it can either be two commissioners, it could be the county clerk, it can be anybody. We just like to have four just because people go on vacation and things like that. So, if we could ask you to appoint, um, two persons, that would be great.
Well, let me ask you one thing. Does it have my name, or say county judge, because in just over a year, I'll be out, so we need to make sure that...
Just says county judge.
Okay, all right, good. That way, that lets it flow into the next administration?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I suggest that we have at least Christina for the third one in there, our county treasurer.
Okay.
And then who else?
Are you okay with that?
I guess I should have asked you first, before I made that suggestion. Commissioner Crenshaw, it's in your, your precinct. Do you want to be able to sign it just in case?
Sure.
Okay. James Crenshaw is our commissioner of precinct two. Judy?
Yes, sir. That works great.
All right, good.
As long as I don't have to pay for nothing.
You do. When you sign, you have to pay.
Yeah, at the very end of all this, I'd like Steve to give us a bit, kind of a brief overview of, uh, what, what a proposal, kind of proposal is about the improvements to the water plant district dam, distribution, all of that, uh, from this grant. And then, uh, and you're, the district is doing the match on it. The county's not doing the actual financial match on it, so. Oh, well, let's wait till the very end. We'll get through the whole process. Yep, thank you.
Ready?
While, while Judy's got the track on the train here, I don't want to throw the switch.
I'm gonna have to attest to these, so I'll just go... You'll just do that? Okay. So, that, that would be the resolution for the, actually, it will be for the judge or the auditor to sign any contractual documents, and then for the county judge, the county auditor, commissioner precinct two, or the county treasurer to sign any financial documents, which would be inclusive of the vouchers.
Okay, I think Kathy's making the proposed motion. Can we have a motion then to allow those designated authorized signatories for these contractual and financial documents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye as well.
All right.
The next one's pretty easy. The next one is proclaiming a fair housing month. This is that activity that you said you would do in the previous resolution, so it basically is that Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight is amended, prohibits discrimination in housing, and declares it as a national policy to provide within constitutio- constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States, and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans, and whereas the national fair housing law during the month of December provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success and the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans, now, now, therefore, we, the Commissioners' Court of Eastland County, do proclaim December as Fair Housing Month in the County of Eastland, and do hereby urge all the citizens of the locality to become aware of and to support the fair housing law.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments about the proclamation declaring December twenty-one as County of Eastland Fair Housing Month? Okay, can we have a motion then to make that proclamation and to allow me to sign the same?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous.
The next one is when you...
Did you want me to sign all of these?
Yes, sir, if you would, please. When the court decided or agreed to move forward with an application because of the way procurement is handled at a federal level now, you pre, yes, ma'am, you pre-procured engineering and administration, and you did so because we weren't sure exactly how much money you were going to ask for, engineering and administration was done on a percentage basis. At this point, the agency requires that percentage basis to be basically ratified into a actual number, and puts the contract number onto both the engineering and administration contracts. So, that is, that is, I think it's done as two different motions for engineering and administration.
Item five is grant administration. Item six is engineering.
Okay, so the first one is grant administration, and this basically says, as pre-procurement required, the county contractually entered to agreement prior to the establishment of the project, the contract agreement was based on a percentage figure. Federal regulations require that with funding, the grant administration environmental services contract must be amended to include a dollar figure. The contract amounts are as follows: contract amount for non-housing project infrastructure is seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for contract number twenty-two dash oh eight two dash oh oh one dash D one nine six.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments about this amendment for grant administration services? Can we have a motion then to make that amendment and allow me to sign the same?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous.
And the same holds true for engineering. Uh, the only difference in the wording is that contract amount for non-housing project infrastructure is one million, one hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents, again, for contract number twenty-two dash zero eight two dash zero zero one dash D one nine six. And then it also sets up billing milestones, um, as GLO allows for in the contract, at thirty percent, sixty percent, seventy percent, eighty-five percent, and then at a hundred percent.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions or comments about the amendment for engineering services contract for the CDBG MIT? Okay, can we have a motion to make that amendment and to allow me to sign the same there?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well.
The next item is number seven, discuss, consider, and adopt local procurement policies and procedures pertaining to the GLO Community Development Block Grant. These are, um, rather lengthy. Um, it just basically states that you will follow all federal procurement policies as in regards to the, to the grant, and I certainly would be happy to make available to everyone a copy of it if you would so like, and we sent it, so it's part of the agenda packet.
Yeah, I think I've sent it out to everybody in their emails, but if, if you want a copy today, we should make one while you're here.
Absolutely, and, um, it's just an adoption of the policy, and we didn't have a, we don't, the, sorry, and item in the minutes is all we needed for this. It didn't require a resolution.
Okay, okay. But we, we do need to adopt... We do need to adopt it, though.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so any discussion on adopting the local procurement policies and procedures pertaining to this grant? All right. With that, then, can we have a motion then to adopt the local procurement policies and procedures?
And allow you to sign?
And allow me to sign the same? Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye? Aye as well. All right.
Actually, this one didn't have a resolution. We'll, we'll just have to have the minutes when...
Nothing to sign then. I can't believe we got through all seven of those so fast.
I mean, I'll give this back to you this afternoon, all yours, and I'll be...
Okay. Steve, would you give us a little, just kind of a brief overview of what this really great grant opportunity is gonna do for the water district?
Sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for doing all this today. I know this is a lot of stuff, but, um, but this project's gonna do is, we're going to, first off, we're going to put the rest of the sheet tile wall on the upstream slope of the dam. We've done two hundred and thirty foot and a hundred and fifty foot, and there's about another eight, eight hundred foot rough of that. Uh, we're also going to repair the conduit for the primary spillway, the morning glory, everybody calls it, and... Down the conduit, and we're also going to install a vent system in the morning glory itself to where it doesn't belch the water out both ends severely, because it pulls a vacuum, and that's what causes that. And we're also going to, um, decommission our raw water pump station behind the dam. We're gonna put a brand-new floating raw water pump station on top of the water south of our lake keeper's house and the main body of water, and what that'll do, that'll, that'll give us the best of our water all the time. There's been some issues in time pass on the conduit for the inlet tower that goes under the, down below, under the dam to supply water to the raw water pump station. In fact, it was slipped, in other words, with a new line back in the nineties sometime, and it's, it's the same vintage as the rest of the dam, and it's time to do that, and this, this new, uh, floating pump station will just bypass everything on the, uh, east side of twenty-four sixty-one on our infrastructure for the water, actual water. We'll decommission the building, uh, all pumps and everything, and... And then we're also going to put a, a new, it'll be a 1,400-foot cutoff wall. This'll be through the emergency spillway on the lakeside of 2461. It'll kind of go at an angle, and it'll be a full-width cutoff wall. And what that is, is for erosion control, where should the 2007 flood happen again or something that's severe, it would not allow the dirt to wash, because the dam can actually fail by the dam itself not failing, but the spillway failing because of headcut, they call it, because of the severe erosion. And these, these cutoff walls will go down about eight foot, and it'll be buried concrete, about, about three foot wide, something like that. And it'll preserve it from now on. And I was telling Judy, just before the meeting started, the timing on this GLO grant is, is something, because we just literally finished last week on our FEMA project. So we'll be getting closed-out documents on that fairly soon.
Relatively soon. Said relatively soon.
Assuming FEMA operates in their usual timely manner. Well, we're, we're very glad to have this opportunity to help, or at least I am, I'm speaking for myself here, to help the water district make some changes out there, some upgrades and some improvements that are needed. I mean, it's a, it's built in the mid-'50s, a lot of that concrete and all that has just got, it's got a life on it, so then we're pretty close to that life.
Yes, and this will, when this GLO grant is completed, I forgot to say a minute ago, it'll be the first time in that dam's history that it will be in 100% compliance.
Wow, wow.
With dam, TCEQ dam safety, NEPA dam safety.
Wow.
That's gonna be pretty neat.
Oh, that's great.
But it's thanks to you guys for making all this up.
It's been a team effort between all of us, all my commissioners, your board, Judy, her group. So it's all worked well. And something that's a, the lake and the system that supplies more than 60% of the water to Eastland County has to be maintained and taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Gentlemen, any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay, and I'm not even running for office, and I had a big speech today. Thank you, Steve. Judy, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we'll see y'all back here at 3:00 for the kickoff.
Yes, you will.
Okay, good deal, good deal. Alright. This is item number eight. Discuss, consider, propose, pending contracts and agreements. Does anybody have anything to present today about that? Okay, we've got several things going on, but they are agenda items in the rest of the agenda. With that then, there's nothing for number eight. Number nine is discuss, consider the joint resolution between Eastland County, Eastern County Republican Party Chair, Eastern County Democratic Party Chair, and Joint Election Administrator for Contract and Election Services for the 2022 primary and primary runoff elections, and give authority for Joint Election Administrator to sign the contract. Summer Olivera, how are you today, Summer?
Good, how are y'all?
Good. Is this the normal contract that we have for two years?
Yes, sir. I just changed the dates. I do have the joint resolution now.
Okay. And Ms. Hayes is here with the Republican Party. Anybody here from the Democrat Party?
Gosh, Kelly's not here.
Okay, okay. So take us through this, just kind of overview, if you would, Summer.
So this is the same contract basically that we've used the last four years. I think I just went in and changed the dates. The party's contract with us, so we can, the county can run their elections, so March 2022, and then the runoff in 2022, and it just covers, we had a meeting back in November, and we discussed everything, and so the county will be hosting their election.
Okay, and Robin Hayes, as a Republican County Party Chair, anything from your, on your behalf or the party's behalf about the contract? I'm assuming you've read it, you agreed to it and everything? Okay, anything to else to address on this? Here's your chance.
I'll call you later.
Well, you can, but it won't be in an open meeting, so. Okay, alright, good deal. Gentlemen, any questions or comments on this contract for election services between the county and the two parties? And this also authorizes Summer Olivera to sign. So with that, can we have a motion to enter into this contract as designated and to allow the Joint Election Administrator to sign?
Motion.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And.
Robin, may I come up and sign this resolution?
Okay, do we need, is this part of the joint resolutions, disinformation for joint primary? Okay. Well, first, let me get this contract signed. Does you have another one that you want me?
I, I just, I have one, but we can make that one the original.
And there's that one for you to sign.
Okay. I'm going to sign this, too. I thought I did. You have one for each of the parties? I got another one. We have the resolution.
You're setting all that?
No.
Thank you. And when Kelly signs, will you get me a copy?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
In, in the mix of the, or mix of that, we also have this joint resolution. It's statistical information for joint primary. It's a state form called a JRC. Says, "Whereas the Democratic Party of Eastern County, Texas, and the Republican Party of Eastern County, Texas, desire to enter into a 2022 joint primary election services contract with the Eastern County Election Administrator as the county election officer, now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Eastern County, Texas, that said Commissioners Court authorizes a joint contract." And it is by and among Kelly McMichael, Democratic Party Chair, and Robin Hayes, Republican Party Chair, and Summer Olivera, County Election Officer for Eastern County, Texas, for the joint primary election on March 1st, and Eastern County joint primary runoff election, if necessary, on May the 24th. Can we have a motion to adopt that joint resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
And allow you on the side?
Well, this is for all of us to sit up and sign.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, though, for keeping me on track. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Alright, and this is the 13th. Summer, will you get a copy of that back out? Everybody wants a copy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As soon as I can get with Kelly to sign it all.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You bet. Thank you, Summer. It's gonna be a busy year.
Oh, yes. Already busy.
Alright, thank y'all. That takes us to item number 10. Discuss, consider donating used iPhones and accessories to Eastern County Crime Victims Assistance Center. Ms. Keith?
We have iPhones that have been turned in, and you each have a list. Crime Victims Assistance Center will take the phones if the county will donate them to them, transfer. We have 22 iPhone 8s, 22 iPhone cases, three chargers, four sets of earbuds, and four boxes of screen protectors. We will have more, because everybody that is still using an iPhone 8 is going to get an iPhone 12 now. So this is just what we have inventoried already.
And remind me, when we signed up for the service, the phones were basically given to us by?
They cost us 50 cents.
50 cents? That's pretty close to nothing.
Now, we paid for the cases and, and screen protectors.
Sure, but we didn't pay anything basically for the phones, just sign up for the service? Okay.
And everyone that's turned these in have cleared the memory and?
I, that was the instructions.
Shredded the chips?
That was the instructions, so we're not taking responsibility for that.
Okay.
Alright, can we have a motion then to donate this, these items as listed to the Eastland County Crime Victim Assistance Center?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous. So those phones and items are donated to the Crime Victim Center. Item number 11 is discuss, consider approving and executing contracts with entities for dispatch services, ambulance services, and for rural fire suppression. Let's see here, I've got this. Dispatch has been signed by everybody. City of Cisco, City of Eastland, City of Ranger, City of Gorman, City of Roden Star, Eastern Medical Hospital, and Cisco College. That's dispatch. Tracking. Oh, no, wait, that's not right. The hospital is not sent there as back end. Is that right? He's here. Alright. Christmas is almost here. Great, thank you. Alright, so we now have received in, and that is the last one outstanding. We've received all other ones. This is the one from the hospital. So may I have a motion to allow me to sign this contract with the hospital for dispatch?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Now, I'm gonna go ahead and sign this. Okay. So with that. I'm gonna give you this original. Kathy, if you'll get us some copies back out, please, ma'am? And that is gonna be, the day that we sign it is today. Now, let's see, it says on our, but we've got tracking, I've asked Kathy to build us some tracking forms for all these. Cisco College for dispatch, that's in today's package, is that right? Okay, good deal. Because that takes care of all of dispatch, once we get this one back from the college done. Emergency Medical Services, EMS, City of Ranger has signed it. We received it last week. That's also in the package to sign.
Yes.
Okay, the Cooperative EMS, that was approved back in October. So when we get that signed here in a minute for EMS, that will finish all of them out. And then the fire departments, let's see. We have now received all of them, and Desdemona, is it in the package as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have Desdemona that's coming in for today. So that clears all of our contracts for fire, EMS, and dispatch. It completely takes care of all of that. So let's go through these contracts that we have here right quick. Those are the ones that we needed. This is the Desdemona Volunteer Fire Department contract. And the chief has signed off on that. May I have a motion to allow me to sign the same with Desdemona VFD?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. It is unanimous. Kathy, there's the one for Desdemona. And then this one is Eastern County City of Ranger Cooperative Ambulance Service Contract. And I've actually already signed this. Some of these we send out already signed, so that the other end of the party has those. Let's just have a motion to accept this contract back in. This is City of Ranger Cooperative Ambulance Service Contract.
I'll make one.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. And there is the contract with Ranger EMS. This is dispatch. And this is with Cisco College. So with that, can I have a motion to sign this dispatch agreement between the county and Cisco College?
I'll make one.
Alright, motion made. We have a second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. Okay. It's a little confusing each year. We, I think this template thing is gonna help us stay on track a little better. Okay, and there's that one with Cisco College. And then this is a dispatch agreement. And this is with the City of Ranger, signed by the mayor. Alright, can we have a motion to enter into this agreement and to allow me to sign the same for dispatch with City of Ranger?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And I'd like to say thank you to Kathy Leftner for staying on top of all this, to make sure that we have all these back in.
I'm sorry.
Alright. Takes care of all of that. Item number 12 is discuss, consider the TextDOT Local Government Assistance Program for fiscal year 2022 for Eastern County. We received a letter back December the 6th from TextDOT, and they say that they have surplus material on hand, and the location is, let's see, where is that?
Tudor Road.
Tudor Road, Tudor Road and I-20?
Yeah.
Tudor Road and I-20, and the, our county allotment for this year is $16,564. That is the surplus material. And what we need to do at this point is make note that it is Tudor Road, exit 363 South on the east side, 3,213 cubic yards, with a value of approximately $5 per cubic yard. Each year, we have to send out a letter requesting that to TextDOT, and that's what I'm asking today from commissioners. Do we want to enter into this letter, sign this letter, and have me send it back out to TextDOT and get that going? Okay, can we have a motion then to allow me to sign this letter requesting that local government assistance surplus material?
Motion.
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, Kathy. And there is that. Let's see. Doesn't say exactly when we can start moving it. It just says we have to, they have to receive our request, so I need to get a copy of that back, so I can send it off to TextDOT, please.
Next year, they, I mean, this year, they didn't even contact us.
Yeah, we had to go ask them.
Yeah.
And they said, oh, yeah, we thought Charles very well.
Is it something that came off of the Ranger Hill project? Is that too far away?
Yeah, it's still, it, it's all come off of Ranger Hill.
Okay. Alright, item number 13. Uh, we need to take a break. Anybody need a break? Break, break, no break. Keep going, going. Item 13, it's a 911 update, a corporate dispatch update. Sheriff?
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
For November, we did 3,622 total calls for an average of 120 calls. Uh, for November, we did three thousand six hundred and twenty-two total calls for an average of a hundred and twenty calls per day out there. Um, from September, now your, your deal only shows from September, we'll have to, at the end of the year, we'll get you a complete total because from September to now is when we, September is when we started the new cat system, so all those numbers are coming off this. At the end of the year, I'll add the previous stuff together, as we're told, but for right now, September through November, we ran ten thousand five hundred and sixty-six calls with an average of a hundred and sixteen calls per day. Quite a bit, actually. Uh, the, uh, towers are in, the new tower in Rising Star, the new tower in Ranger and the new tower in Gorman are in. We're in testing phase right now, we haven't, we haven't reprogrammed everything, we're testing to make sure that they're not gonna interfere. Uh, we had, we did have a problem in Gorman and a problem in Ranger. Uh, because Gorman's, uh, Gorman's, uh, tower, fire department tower and Ranger's fire department tower, for their stations are on the same antenna. So when we started paging, we figured out that it was, the antennas are too close and it's, it caused a problem, so we had to do a little switch over at dispatch. Um, no big deal, it's all, it's all working, uh, now, but for a couple of days there, we're trying to figure out what the problem was, and that's what the problem was. Uh, Ri- uh, Rising Stars is on a different tower, so they're not, the antennas aren't too close to interfere. It's just a programming issue and it's been resolved as far as I know. Nobody from Ranger's here, so.
Yeah.
Um, as far as I know, that's resolved. Uh, we, what we'll be getting into, um, probably after the first year, just because there's so much going on at the moment, we still have a couple more weeks of testing phase to do. Um, we'll get into going around to all the entities. Uh, myself and COG, uh, will go around to, uh, for those that wanna do it, I think Cisco can program their own, y'all may be able to as well, but um, we'll go to each of the fire departments, each of the police departments, hospital, whoever is involved with, uh, needing services and reprogram all the radios with all the new tower information, so no matter where they're at, if they come over here or we go over there, whatever, everybody has all the same channels and, uh, should be able to communicate back. There's a police repeater and a county fire repeater, uh, we'll put in at each one of those locations. So when this is all said and done, which should be a five-tower system in the county, should not have any more dead spots. After all these years, hopefully.
We hope.
So, good things, takes time, took time to get those towers up, cause all the back ordering and everything sitting out, out in the Gulf and in the Pacific Ocean, but anyway, so going well out there, I think.
Good deal. Do you have any questions or comments on dispatch, not only one? All right, good deal, keep up the good work, Sheriff, thank you. All right. And that takes us to item fourteen, up down county burn ban, of course, we do have the burn ban in place now. Um, have three fire departments here, surely you don't want the burn ban off at this time, do you? I wouldn't think so. Cisco had something out going out north of Lake Cisco yesterday, didn't it?
Had a grass fire there.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any, uh, comments or possible action, burn ban, or leave it alone, leave it on? Okay, no action. Burn ban stays on. Item fifteen is personnel matters, Ms. Kee.
Yes, you each have a report in front of you, the time period of the report is November twenty-fourth through December seventh. During that time period, there were two new hires, one full-time deputy treasurer and one, one full-time roadhand for precinct three. Um, there were four employment terminations, one full-time deputy treasurer, one full-time jail guard, one full-time roadhand precinct two, and one full-time roadhand precinct three.
All right, any other elected appointed county officials that have personnel matter to discuss? Hearing none?
Still need a female jailer, if anybody knows somebody.
Kathy? You didn't wanna do it?
No.
Not agile one.
All right, with that then, can we have a motion to accept the personnel report as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. And let's take a short break here on item sixteen, I'll make a motion for a short recess. Second, second, all in favor say aye. Aye as well, we got a short recess.
On the phone, I'm about to meet him.
I'm glad you're back, huh?
Drink?
Yeah.
I got a fifty percent Saturday.
What's that?
Hey, Joe, I've been here two minutes.
It really is.
I haven't heard my name before.
Two, two.
Are you, your name's in the holler?
That's what I've been told.
David.
Always start out, cause.
Because we all.
We all start out.
We will, yeah.
We're just, we're just being fine.
I still don't.
I wanted to come up at Thanksgiving, though.
I'd work some more.
June.
June.
Yes, we have, we're doing drawings, dark trees.
Isn't that a?
So, we'll be fifteen.
We have more drawings.
So, I think now, obviously, coming in.
And we're still settling a couple of areas there.
So, you know, they're getting in for the last however many drawings we have.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. It helps us a lot.
We got two.
I think sometimes, just, I actually heard this race, two people want your job. Isn't that bad?
Well, I can only say, I've heard of two people that want your job.
That's what I heard.
Ends today at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Jane, Robert, me.
Nobody wants to want your job.
I'm not sure I want to be a commissioner. You guys have got to put up a lot of stuff.
I know.
I'm, I'm, I might have made a mistake.
At least pay off about two sales.
You'll be fine.
So, I'd say yours is just as hard, Joe.
I just wonder.
Well, we'll see. My gosh, you're one of those.
Anyway.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
Oh.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. It helps us a lot.
We got two.
It helps us out.
I think sometimes, just, I actually heard this race, two people want your job. Isn't that bad?
Well, I can only say, I've heard of two people that want your job.
That's what I heard.
Ends today at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Jane, Robert, me.
Nobody wants to want your job.
I'm not sure I want to be a commissioner. You guys have got to put up a lot of stuff.
I know.
Jane?
I'm, I'm, I might have made a mistake.
At least pay off about two sales.
You'll be fine.
So, I'd say yours is just as hard, Joe.
I just wonder.
Well, we'll see.
I gosh, you're one of those.
Anyway.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
Check.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
No one just hasn't been.
I haven't heard anything lately about the barn or yard or more.
Sorry.
I would think for Christmas, when I was in the day, but for them.
Mm.
But they'll probably.
I'm pretty honest with you.
I'm.
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 I'm.